Thank you. Good evening. Let's smile a little bit. Welcome to the city of West Miami. Today is our regular commission meeting of Wednesday, March 21st, 2018. So, once again, welcome to the city of West Miami. Let's rise for, well, no, the invocation, please? Yeah, let's rise.
Thank you, and let's bow our head tonight and pray for the families of all the victims of the horrific and tragic accident as a result of the bridge collapsing by FIU. This incident has caused so much pain in our community, especially in the hearts of all those family members that must deal with their losses now. So, we respectfully ask all of us to maintain a moment of silence in their honor. Lord, we come to you tonight to ask for divine intervention for the sake of peace and solace in these troubled times that we're living in. We pray for the first responders who arrived to the scene of the collapsed bridge to render aid, for they are left with emotional scars and constant reminders of this tragic event. We pray for the victims, we pray for their, all their family members. We also pray for those that are victims of the recent bombing attacks and the two children that were recently killed as a result of yet more gun violence in Maryland. We pray for our servicemen and women abroad who guard our boundaries each and every day. We ask for you to bless our city and its citizens and for the general well-being of this community, and we offer this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Deputy Chief, for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to take a point of privilege to introduce Carlos Lopez. Carlos Lopez is running for Circuit Court Judge. Mr. Lopez, welcome. You can address here.
Thank you.
How about you have a microphone?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to take this opportunity, first and foremost, to thank the mayor and the commissioners for allowing me this opportunity to be here with you. I am a candidate for Circuit Court Judge. I have been practicing law for over 38 years. I'm a board-certified civil trial lawyer. I have had occasion to work with the best you have on the days, Mr. Villalobos, so, as a colleague, and I want to seek your opportunity, seek the opportunity to ask for your vote here today. I firmly believe that judges are something like the commissioners that you have here in front of you and the mayor. You get to see the commissioners and the mayor, but you don't get to see the president or the vice president of the United States, even though you vote for him or her, and you don't get to see your senators and your congresspeople. That's important, because we are the first line and the different branches of government. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you announce?
Yes.
It was my privilege, my privilege, to work out with Carlos as a co-counsel and the receivership of one of the largest television stations in Miami de County. Carlos and I worked together representing the receiver in that particular occasion. Not only Carlos is eloquent, but distinguished and have a temperament that certainly we need as a lawyer to be a judge. I had the privilege of being in the Judicial Nominating Committee at one point that determined who would be elevated to the governor to be appointed, and one of the, and several of the issues that we, or characteristics of the person or character, that we used to determine whether a person should be recommended to be a judge was integrity and knowledge and wisdom that I think that my colleague Carlos has. So, it was my honor, your future honor, to have worked with you.
Welcome to the city.
Also tonight, I want to recognize we have somebody that is very dear to our heart. It's Marta Flores. Thank you for coming tonight.
La reina de la noche.
With that, I-
My chaperone.
With that, I would like to-
Let me say something.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
This is something very personal. When I was courting my wife, that was-
Oh, my God.
Many, 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 many years ago, we used to have, well, I've been married 11 times, by the way, to the same woman. Every five years, I proposed to her, and she says no, like she did the first time, and then I have to quarter and quarter again until I convince her, and then we go to church and we renew our vows. But when I was first courting and visiting my wife as a boyfriend, Marta Flores used to be right across, used to live across the street, and she would sit there and take, look at me, to be sure that I would behave. So, I have known Marta for all my life, and we have a very, very dear love and affection for you, Marta, okay?
Thank you.
We sure do. I've been my lawyer for a long, long time.
Okay, with that, I also would like to skip some items in the agenda, and Madam Clerk, I would like to go directly to item 11A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11, New Business Agenda. Item is 11A, Presentation of Recognition to Maria Helly Diaz for her 35 years of service to the Social Security Administration by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you.
Now, yeah, Mr. Blanes. I know you're ready to go.
I never know, I never know what I want to say, so.
It is indeed my pleasure and privilege to present Maria Helly Diaz with a well-deserved recognition for a number of reasons. Maria is a longtime resident of the city of West Miami. Her parents, Geraldo and Mari Ramos, are well-respected, were respected and loved family in the city of West Miami, and they were very involved with our city. Maria is a widow of our esteemed former city clerk, Felix Diaz, who's always been remembered. We remember him every day. For her life and dedication, serviced the Social Security Administration office for 35-plus years, more or less, but tonight-
But she started when she was 10, though.
But, but tonight, it is all about Helly, as we say, con cariño, and this is an honor, and we want to present this during a special month today. I mean, this month is, we honor the women in, in service in many sessions. So, therefore, tonight, on behalf of myself, the mayor, Vice Mayor Candida Blanca, Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez, Luciano Suarez, and esteemed Commissioner Blanes, who I know is going to speak very well tonight, no pressure, and then, of course, with that, I would like to invite our commissioner, if you want to add anything to it, and I know I kept it short because I know you're all going to speak.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez, you're first.
Well, like Blanes said, Maria, his father, Geraldo, was, his father was an institution in this town. Everybody knows him, he knows everybody, and her mother, everybody loved her, and, you know, was a couple that everybody likes. Now, the children was exceptional, and Maria was one of the, of the children they had. So, what, that was a very distinguished family, and I tell you that also, then Maria went to another level. Maria become, the, Marta Flores is the queen of the night, and Maria was the queen of the day, because in the radio, when she had the programs about the social security, everybody knows, "Dr. Maria Diaz." You remember, Aldia Seca, Father Aldia Seca called you, and he always was calling you to his program, and everybody, everybody wants to talk to Maria with the problems they have. They, they don't remember the age, they don't remember the children they have, they don't remember this, they don't remember, and Maria always was guiding them, and, you know, going to the point. So, Maria, really, the people are going to miss you, because everybody knew you or knows you. So, I tell you, I think we have to not only gratitude as a neighbor, you know, that we know your family, but you as a person for the community, you are, you are a celebrity, really. No, really, she's a celebrity in De County, in our area, and, and I have to recognize that, I congratulate you, and I wish you were very happy. You're going to retire, I heard that?
I'm retiring.
You're already retired? Oh, my God. Well, I know you are going to travel, because she's a specialist, and to go to Machu Picchu, and, you know, and then, and then, you cannot go with her. Me neither, because she is, she takes the children, and they go to very special places, and they overnight on the, on the mountain, and they are very, very particular, they're very specific, and they're very good. So, I tell you, they, they are almost the millennium family, because they do very nice things and very new things. So, Maria, what can I tell you? Everybody loves you, and I personally think you are a big celebrity, and not everybody does what you have been done with the clarity, with the knowledge, with the love that you talk to the senior citizens. Remember, I represent here the, because I am the younger in this, in this table, and I, I represent, boy, I, I am the director of the community center. And our senior residents always talking about you, asking about you, so, I hear you. In Versailles, the people talking about, drinking coffee, and they say, "Oh, I hear Maria Diaz said this today," because she, I was going to call Maria Diaz. So, really, really, I congratulate you, because during the day, you are the queen, and during the night, your friend, Marta, is the queen too. So, I have to recognize her too, you know, because you are good friends, and you go to her program too. So, what can I tell you? There's no more. I don't know, I miss, you want to say something there?
Everybody has its turn. Commissioner Ron, yes?
I have to say that, I have to say that Maria also gave back to her city during the time she was working. I remember being on Charter Review with you many years back, so during her busy time of working, she also found the time to, to give back to her city and participate in, in our Charter Review Board, and I don't know as much about you from way back then, but I can say that I've had fun when we've gone out, met you socially, and I met my part, my social party buddy back there at an event, so I look forward to seeing you out there more often, and I see you exercising every day, so that's a good thing, a good part of retirement. Congratulations, congratulations on your retirement, and I look forward to seeing you out there every day exercising.
Vice Mayor?
Helly, there are no more words to say. Helly, you know I always love you, and I always will, and we will keep in touch always. Thank you for everything you have done.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I never really know what I'm, I'm going to say, so I shoot from the hip, but I got an idea, listening to the mayor and listening to Commissioner Suarez. I thank everyone for coming and, and joining us in recognizing Helly Diaz for her service to this community. Let's see, I, I like, there were some dear friends of mine that were mentioned, and I like to, to start in a roundabout way and pay a little tribute to, to Helly's family. I lost my brother in December, this past December, but I can assure you, I already knew what it was like to lose a brother and to lose a sister. Felix Diaz was my brother, and he spent many times talking to me, suggesting, giving me admonitions, and he was trying to teach me to, to be prudent and to have temperance and to have patience. It hasn't worked. I'm still working on it, and, and I know that he's always there, you know, telling me, "Juan, Juan, are you crazy?"
Pero Juan.
But that's, that was my, my buddy Felix, "Pero Juan," and, and of course, that would help me immensely. So, going on to, to, to Geraldo, Geraldo Ramos, Helly's father, I would have long conversations with, with Geraldo, and, you know, one day, he was talking to me, and he, he mentioned a word I wasn't familiar with. He said causality, and I said, "What the heck is that?" And then he explained to me that that was the cause of things, why things happen, cause and effect, and he explained to me, we used to have these philosophical conversations all the time, and he was explaining to me how, how we're all connected and how we're all really, all are one, and the illusion that you're there and I'm here is, is but an illusion, because we are all brothers and sisters, we're all one. So, that, that really stuck with me, and Mari, Mary Diaz, my sister, I consider her my sister, she, again, I had many, many long philosophical conversations with her, and one day, I recall, we were driving, and we were going somewhere, and, and I was driving, it was my car, and she was next to me, we stopped by the red light, and a beggar came over to my side, and she said, "Open the window." I opened the window, and she reached in the center council and grabbed all my change and said, "Here, give it to him." So, I took my change and I gave it to the guy, and then we drove off, and she said, "Always give, no matter what, no matter who they are, no matter what they want it for, you always give. Your duty is to give. When someone in need of help, needs help, you give it to them." And, you know, that's one thing that I, I've never forgotten, along with, with what her father, Geraldo, told me. And now, getting back to Helly, finally, I'm supposed to talk about her, I mean, you know, Helly is, is the living proof, the living example of what I learned from her parents. I, I can't think of how many times I've called Helly and I'm, I'm thinking, "Oh, she's busy, she's working, her family, this, that, the other, she might not have any time," because, you know, people call me with issues, so I, dealing with social security, so I, I call her, and as soon as I get her on the phone and I say, "Helly, I need help," such and such, and the next thing, without any hesitation whatsoever that comes out of Helly's mouth is, what's her last name? What's her birthday? What's her problem? What's her number? I'll call them, and, you know, I'm, I'm relieved that she's going to help, and, and sure enough, the person gets the needed help, and their issue and, and their cause is, is solved, and I just can't think of how many times she's done this for me and others, countless times. Some words come to mind, never has one single person done so much for so many, and that's Helly Diaz. She has really done an incredible service to this community. She has touched so many people at their time of need, you know, these, these people that need this type of help are, are desperate, because they're in financial dire straits, and she has always been there to help with empathy and, and, and much care and, and much resolution. So, I thank her for being my friend, and I see all the family here, I love all of you, you guys are great. So, with that said, I think I've run out of things to say. You know, this is, this is one of the times that we, that I, and I know that we really take pleasure in, in being able to sit here and do, and do this. So, I thank everyone for joining us in paying tribute and distinction to Helly Diaz. Thank you, Helly.
Let me, let me add something.
I couldn't repeat all that if my life depended on it.
Let me add something that today I have a casual conversation with County Commissioner Javier Soto. He's preparing the, you know, the fair, the, the fair at the Tropical Park. They bring cattle, they bring horses, they bring many things related to the, we call in Cuba, Feria Ganadera. They call here the cattle fair in the, in the Tropical Park, the, and I was talking to him, and I always said, "You know, because you are, we are going to recognize today Maria." He said, "Which Maria?" "You remember, because your father and Javier Soto, they were together in La Salle School in Havana, and when your father was leaving, Javier, if I'd see him, he asked me for your father." So, he told me, "Oh, Luciano tells her that I'm very proud to her, because, you know, she knows what you do, you in Social Security, and, and she talked to you many times for many problems, so she always is very happy that we recognize you tonight, really."
Thank you. And at this point, I want to point-
Can I get up and say something? Or do I have to ask permission?
I, can you wait a couple of minutes, if you don't mind? Or do you want to speak directly to Commissioner? Because we, we got more, more for you.
More?
Yeah, we're not done. This is only the beginning. This is only the beginning. I have a whole-
Where's that cop?
Actually, actually, another point of privilege, and I would like for Marta Flores to speak tonight en español, por supuesto, Marta.
Adelante, por favor.
Adelante, Marta. You free?
Vez al micrófono.
Quieres, quieres el micrófono?
El micrófono, Marta.
Marta tiene que ser con el micrófono.
No me gusta darle, excuse me, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The problem is, I prefer to speak in Spanish, because all my audience, television, radio is Spanish, por eso prefer de no what, voy en inglés. Entonces, quería decirles solamente esto, porque yo mañana voy a hacer mi programa, tengo televisión mañana y radio, voy a hacerlo de esta reunión, porque quizás ustedes no tienen ideas de lo que significa María Diaz en esta comunidad. Son 35 años de servicio para todo el mundo, no importa la nacionalidad, pero fíjense lo curioso, María Diaz habla hace treinta y pico de años conmigo en la radio. Yo jamás he tenido un micrófono, una pizarra, y tengo cinco líneas. Me imagino que todo el mundo me entiende lo que estoy diciendo, qué bueno. Cinco líneas que jamás han estado apagadas, todas a la vida incendida por treinta y pico de años, buscando orientación de María Diaz a través del Seguro Social. Jamás he visto a María Diaz disgustada o brava, porque la gente le pregunta y le pregunta, a veces ella contesta una cosa y la pregunta se extiende, y le pregunta con otra, y ella dice que sí con la cabeza, porque realmente la paciencia que tiene es inagotable, pero no es la paciencia, es la sabiduría que tiene del tema. Señores, hay quien pasa por un lugar y no se entera o aprende a media. María así mirado todo lo del Seguro Social desde abajo hacia arriba. Usted le puede preguntar lo que sea. Yo tenía temor al principio, decía, "Bueno, pero quizás esta mujer no se acuerda de ciertas cosas que le preguntan de todos, los cambios, cuándo vienen, cuándo se retiran." A veces hacen preguntas tan, tan extrañas que realmente uno se queda asombrado de lo que ella contesta. Su calidad como profesional es algo fuera de serie, pero su calidad como ser humano está a la altura, quizás más de su profesionalismo como tal. Créame, yo siento por María Diaz, y por eso estoy aquí, un cariño de hermana. Yo fui hija única, no tengo familia más que mi hijo y mi esposo. Perdí a mis padres cuando llegué aquí muy joven. Yo llevo 58 años de vida en ese lugar. Tuve la suerte o la desgracia, no sé qué, de abrir la radio y la televisión en español, y he tratado siempre de servir a esta comunidad en muchísimos aspectos, pero si hay alguien que realmente me ha siempre sorprendido por su trabajo, por su comprensión, por su honradez y su sencillez, es esta señora María Diaz. La vida la ha tocado en múltiples aspectos. Yo, que perdí mis padres muy jóvenes aquí, que soy hija única, que he tenido que trabajar 58 años, llevo trabajando y no he parado todavía, y creo que soy la más, oh, no, yo mismo dije yo, al que lo dijo, y que todavía no me he retirado, pero prefiero retirarme, porque hay pocas personas, y lo voy a decir por primera vez en público, nadie quiere creer que yo tengo 89 años, señora, antes. Ahorita cumpliré 90.
Wow.
Y cuando mi esposo me dice, "Cuándo te vas a retirar?" Digo, "Le, cuando la vida me retire o ya no pueda más." Pero mientras tanto, sigo dando guerra y creo que sigo siendo útil a la sociedad. Con esto quiero decirle que no es fácil cuando se tienen tragedias personales, cuando se tienen hijos que criar, etc., poder seguir en la labor que uno quiere, y esto no saben mucho lo que están aquí. Yo seguí mi camino después de la pérdida de mis padres, gracias a Dios, tengo un solo hijo maravilloso, María lo conoce perfectamente, y sigo mi ruta. Quiero decirle con eso que María se retira del Seguro Social, pero va a seguir en esa labor, porque ahora está disfrutando, cuando ella disfruta los primeros tiempos, que cuando ya te sientas un poquito cansada, te van a venir ideas a la cabeza de lo que puedes hacer, y siempre ella está pensando cómo va a seguir sirviendo, consejerías, ayudar a organizaciones, lo mismo que pienso hace yo, pero mientras tanto, siempre tengan en la mente que ha sido esta señora, que está aquí 35 años de servicio para todos en general. No ha habido credo, ni religión, ni raza, sencillamente espíritu de servicio. María, te quiero mucho, y que Dios nos acompañe todos ustedes.
Since I know you need to know the agenda, I'm going to tell you what's coming. It doesn't matter what we do here tonight, it will never, ever come close to what you have done for so many people. So, we're just going to give you a little talking of appreciation for what you have done, and that will be the key to the city and a proclamation. But before we do that, I want everybody to look at the TV, because we're going to have a, a little video for Maria. Mr. Q?
(Coughing) 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 Thirty-five years ago, María Diaz began her career at the Social Security Administration Center in Miami.
Bravo.
Of these three and a half decades, the last 17 years of her tenure, María was a public relations specialist, guiding, helping, and informing the community of the benefits associated with Social Security. María Diaz, or Helly, as we call her, along with her family and parents, Geraldo and Mari Ramos, have lived in West Miami for four decades. María is the widow of the former city clerk of West Miami, Felix Diaz, who worked at the city for 17 years. María has become a positive icon and source of great pride for the entire West Miami
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, and I rise today to celebrate the career of María Diaz, who will be retiring after more than 35 years serving at the Social Security Administration in my hometown of Miami. My staff and I have had an opportunity to know and work with her over the last 17 years that she has served as a public affairs specialist. Throughout that time, she has been an invaluable resource to us and to our constituents. María started working at the Social Security Administration in 1982 in what she thought would be a temporary job, but she quickly grew to love her work and those she had an opportunity to serve. Over the last three decades, with her calm demeanor-
with her calm demeanor and her ever-present smile, María has made a significant impact in the lives of countless individuals in our community. Mr. Speaker, María Díaz is the embodiment of the ideal public servant. She has dedicated her life to faithfully and diligently serving those most in need in South Florida. So on behalf of a grateful community, I wish her the best of luck in the next exciting chapter of her life. Felicidades, amiga.
Because of her dedication and dogged hard work, today, the city of West Miami, Mayor Eduardo Muñoz, Vice Mayor Candida Blanca, and Commissioners Juan Emblanes, Luciano Suárez, and Rhonda Rodriguez, take great honor in recognizing María Díaz for her 35 years of untiring service at the Social Security Administration and her unmeasurable assistance to the entire community. The city honors María Díaz in March, when we all commemorate the National Women's Month.
With that, let's come forward. Let's come forward.
Wait, she had a speech.
She'll speak later. You hold a moment, okay.
So, what should I write?
Sure.
In your glasses.
Proclamation, I'm going to read the whole thing. I'm going to make it just called. Whereas María, hey, we have been honored for her exceptional work and dedication to the Social Security Administration after serving distinction and integrity for 35 years. Start with your head. Whereas María began her career with the Social Security Administration in 1982, graduating from FIB, as a fighting person. Upon graduating, she was offered a job as a claims representative. Subsequently, filled several positions within the agency and spent 17 years as a public relations specialist. Whereas María married Felix Díaz and raised their children, Michelle, Alexander, and Christian, where they resided in the city of West Miami. Whereas, as a public servant, María, María, María's a sheepman throughout the years and the manner in which she has carried her duties and responsibilities have left an indelible mark on the lives of all those she touched. Whereas, after 35 years of public service, María Helly Díaz looks forward to spending more time with her family, in particular with her granddaughter, Mila. Yes, you. Now therefore, I, Mayor Eduardo H. Muñoz, Vice Mayor Candida Blanca, Commissioner Juan Emblanes, Rhonda E. Rodriguez, and Luciano Del Suárez hereby proclaim March 21st, 2018, as María Helly Díaz's death. And today is the equinox, the cardinal equinox. After that, we're to send you a painting to the city of West Miami. But Helly, the key doesn't work. The doors are always open. All the doors of all the residents are open.
Okay, let's take a nice picture of the family with Helly and then with the family. Thank you. Now the family, Mayoli. Okay.
Igualito, el jovencito. Mini-me, number two.
Who is the mom?
Six.
Okay, now the family. The family is-
Michelle, you're like the only one sitting there.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay.
Yeah, they're cool. Why don't you guys come sit there?
One, two, three.
I'm going to go down with her. Me puedo quedar con la foto?
No, you stay on your own.
Yeah, you're going to back up. Okay, I got it, I got it.
I do the whole.
Speech, speech, speech.
Anytime.
Speech, speech, speech.
Helly's going to speak now.
Can I have your attention, please? Can I have your attention, please? Helly's going to speak now. So can we have a little bit of silence, please?
Your attention, please. It is my day, so you have to listen. Officially, the city of West Miami. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the city. I think I'm the person in this room that has lived in the city longer than anybody. I moved into West Miami by coincidence when I was 10 years old. My parents moved from New York to Miami and we didn't have a place to stay. And the movers arrived before we did. And the movers actually said, there's a house on 59 and 13 Terrace that is for rent, that would rent with children because back then, a lot of people would not rent for children. And we moved in, 5970 Southwest 13 Terrace, by mere luck. My parents fell in love with the neighborhood and bought the house on 14th and 63rd. And when I got married, I told Felix, we're not going any further than around the block. Rebecca Sosa lived next to my parents and would not sell me the house. She sold it after. I hold that grudge against her because I didn't want to go too far. But I found the house right around the corner on 62nd Avenue and 15th Street, where I still live. And after much thinking, I'm probably going to live there for the rest of my life. Hard decision to make, really. But I want to say that I love what I do in my job. And we have some great people from Social Security here who can testify and you can see our texts where they're still doing the job. Because when people say that I solve the problems, I'm one person. There's a lot of dedicated government employees who get a bad rap, who do the hard work. And I still text them, I still call them and I say, my neighbor has a problem, my friend has a problem, so you can keep calling me. Because these people are going to solve. I'm just the middle man now. I can't do it myself, but I could never do it myself. I do it with them. But this had really meant a lot to me and I didn't know what to expect when I came here. But I do want to say something. This is probably one of the nicest things anybody has ever done for me. And I want to thank everybody that's here because everything that I've ever done has been one from the people that are now above, taking care of me and my kids. And you guys in this room. Neighbors that become family. Everybody here has been such an important part and have made me who I am, one way or another. So, including the city. Because I massaged him, held his hand, whatever had to be done. And this is harder than I thought. And I just have, and I will continue to do a lot of good for the city. I walk, I'm meeting a lot of new people in the city. So watch out, guys, I send you an email. I don't know if you saw my email, but that's the first of many to come. And I promise to continue to work for all of you, for everybody. Not only the city of West Miami, but anybody that needs it in whatever capacity, in whatever I can do, whether it's, we call Marta Flores and we say, we got a problem. We're going to take it on the air y Marta lo pone en la radio. And we'll get it solved. So whatever it is, whether it's any federal program or any program that I had the privilege to work and learn about during my job, I will always be here for the community, for anybody who needs it. So please, continue to call me. If I'm not traveling, I promise to answer immediately. But yes, thank you. I'm not going to mention any names, but you know who you are. Everybody here has played a very important role in my life, all of you. Because the city really means a lot to me. And I will continue to do things for the city in a lot of different levels. So thank you, thank you again to all of you. To anybody who had anything to do with this, I thank each and every one of you. So thank you very much. Dwayne Way says, this is my house. So thank you.
Well, with that, we're going to take a few minutes break to-
Wait, presentation.
Presentation? Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, my coworkers, yes. We need to take a picture with the Social Security people so that then we can call you and identify you. Come on.
Anyway, to make it formal, we're going to take a break. Continue with the event.
Yeah, I want everybody's phone number. All right, I want a new one.
Madam Clerk, before I suggest going back to the original order of the agenda, is there any item that I should take out of order?
Mayor, we have a mitigation request, item D and E. And also I have a citizen, Richard Jewitt, who would like to address the commission on the citizen presentation.
Okay, so let's take item number nine first and then the mitigation second and then we'll go back to the original order of the agenda. So can you read item number nine, please?
Item nine, citizen presentations. Richard Jewitt, please come to the podium.
The microphone.
Let me put it this way.
Welcome back.
Name and address, please.
Is that okay?
Yes, state your name and address for the record. Although we know it.
Yes, thank you for having me over here. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'm Richard Jewitt. I reside at 6376 Southwest 11th Street. And I've been a resident for more than 40 years. My concern is that I enjoy living in West Miami. I have enjoyed and will keep enjoying living in West Miami. I think we have maintained a beautiful city. The only thing concerned I have is, and I'm pretty sure everybody's frustrated, but every time we have a little wind, the electricity goes on and it's all caused by trees that are touching the wires. And I know the city has, Yolanda has sent quite a few letters instructing the residents to maintain the trees. But somehow, some of these areas, they get really heavy. Right now, I can show you a picture. There's one on 1075 Southwest 64th Avenue. The tree grew right on the Eastman. Well, it's inside the fence, but the fence is bulging out to the Eastman. And I can show you a picture of that. And I believe that just grew by itself there, you know. And they have not maintained it. I'm pretty sure that that caused a lot of the wire down the last time. And it's going to go. The tree trimmers came around and did a V job on it. And I'm pretty sure in another six months, it'll probably be back where it was, unless we really try to remove those trees or try to have the residents maintain it better, you know, something like that. I don't know. I'm hoping, you know, I'd like to help the city in whatever I can. But I like to have, I mean, I don't mind having electricity. I hope one is really a big problem. But having a limb that just touches the wire and then we have for three or four hours without it, you know, is ridiculous, you know. So I would like for the city to continue their big and wonderful job and try to address this situation and see if- I know Yolanda has written a few letters on that with the commission. But I guess people don't just, you know, they forget about it or just, you know, they don't care.
Yeah, Mr. Jewitt, thank you. Thank you for your observation. As a matter of fact, I have been in the process trying to organize a town meeting with Florida Power and Light. And the intention of that meeting is actually to educate the public on that particular item. We haven't been able to, because they need to organize it with us. And, but thank you because that's a reminder that we should follow up with Armando from Florida Power and Light.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And I have, we have communicated our expression that we're very interested in your town hall meeting that you suggested, Mr. Mayor. They're trying to get a date with their vegetation team out here so that we can have a meeting for the public sometime before hurricane season officially starts. And we'd like to coordinate that during the month of April. I know that we have numerous meetings in April, but perhaps we can keep one agenda light towards the end of the month and go ahead and schedule that meeting. Now, what we are doing to be proactive and educating new residents as they move in, the vegetation team at FPL has provided us with some written material. And we're giving that as part of a welcome packet that we have with the little pamphlets that Mr. Quintana prepared for us a couple of years ago that provide city information and emails and department numbers and whatnot. So we're trying to educate people when they come and their first visit to City Hall. We're trying to provide them with information. But without question, you have some residents that are not as mindful of their surroundings and what damages, you know, you can keep your trees trimmed and aesthetically looking and pleasing and- and pleasing and create that canopy effect, but you have to maintain it. Otherwise, it grows, you know, and obviously, it grows out of proportion, and especially in the Eastman area, because then you have the two and a half feet that belongs to one side of the property owner and the other two and a half feet. So those are issues we have to tackle. However, I'd like to, for the record, advise you that Florida Power and Light has been out, and you probably have seen the trucks, they are doing trimming now because they're trying to strengthen the lines and prepare for hurricane season. So they are working in the area, and there's a lot of vegetation that they have removed away from the lines.
Yeah, Yolanda, I worked for FPL for 30 years, and we used to spend more than $80 million on tree trimming, and it was a quiet job. We tried to maintain the lines, but the thing is that these trees, they grow faster than, you know, especially when you have a lot of rainy season. And it's a shame that, you know, just for one limb that touches the wire, that you're going to be out for, I'm sorry, three or four hours, you know? And it's really, and I'm pretty sure a lot of people are frustrated with that, because the majority of people are trying to maintain their Eastman, you know? But somebody, it's not, they're not very concerned about it.
And we'll send another courtesy notice to the people that have registered online, their email address. We'll try to promote that, but, Mr. Mayor, we should be setting the meeting, probably the last meeting in April, to address this.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Jewitt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jewitt. Mr. Jewitt. No, I'm here. You can, you can, you may be sure, we are, because we have been talking about that. Since the last storm, we detected the problem with the Eastman and the trees. Yeah. Yeah, because that's a problem that we have here now, that those trees are growing too fast, right?
We're retired, we can live with it, without it, we can use anything, you know, but it's frustrating.
No, but we have been, we have been looking for that, really.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys are welcome to come, any meeting, just come and visit us. Even if you have nothing to say, just come and visit.
We enjoy seeing you guys.
We enjoy having you, really, we do.
Likewise, likewise.
Would you please bring Cesar Camacho next time? You bring Dr. Cesar Camacho with you?
Madam Clerk, can you read the next item?
He's not doing too well.
Oh, no?
No, he's not doing too well.
Oh, my God. Oh, I'm going to go to visit tomorrow at the bank.
They don't talk about it, but he said, you know, he doesn't go out any place anymore.
Oh, well, thank you for, tell him, because tomorrow I'm going to call him or visit the bank.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the next item, please?
Yes, item 11D, request for mitigation of code enforcement liens for code violations at 6437 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, and owners, Maximo Corso and Max Corzo.
Thank you. Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor. This property was originally cited back in 2008, in early 2007. Multifamily, illegal aluminum patio roof, construction window permits, building permit violations, and they were recently cleared in November 28th of this year. So all that time, it's just accrued a lot of fines on it. One of them was, like I explained, for multifamily, where they had different people living in the house with several calls for service, for domestic disputes regarding tenant, against And I believe the fines accumulated to an area, what's the amount?
$329.
As I explained, this started with a previous officer, Charlie McDermott, and recently cleared by Martin Garcia.
So there's no current violation of the property?
Right now, no. It's all got taken down, the stuff that was put up.
Including the multifamily?
That's correct.
Okay. Madam Manager, any suggestion, any other, unless you have a...
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Penna, just to be clear, you said that all of these fines have been in place since 2008?
That's correct.
So why weren't they taken care of?
Well, once, if the property owner doesn't bother to remove the violation, it's a homestead, there's really nothing we can do. All we can do is...
So the property owner was aware...
Oh, yes.
Of all the laws that were being broken, and they did nothing?
That's correct.
Nothing was done?
That's correct.
For all that time?
Yes. All we have power, once it's that kind of property, all we have the power is to lean the property.
Okay.
When you lean a property, only when a transaction, which perhaps that's the case right now, takes place, that's when we revisit.
Well, the property owner was noticed about, of all these violations. We always saw notice by certified mail and United States regular mail. I'm sure there was communication with the owners. The owner is present here, Max Corzo. Definitely is one of these cases where it took way too long to resolve, to attain compliance. And in fact, there is compliance now, but all these years have passed, and so these fines accumulate because you also are dealing with penalty that is associated, the penalty that is associated with the fine. So you had structural issues there because you have a multifamily conversion that constitutes an illegal kitchen or an illegal dwelling in an R1 lot. You also had some roof, I believe roofing structures around the property that were also cited as part of the code enforcement. I'm sorry?
Aluminum roof.
Aluminum roofs that were erected, that were, you know, not allowable by law. So we had to get to the point where we got the owner to take ownership of these violations and correct them. It took a lot longer than we expected and that we hoped. And so because they became liens, they come to you for a mitigation, because that's the venue for this type of mitigation to get resolved. So as you know, we have a considerable amount of time on the file, expenses involving our attorney, our code enforcement team, and the owners here, Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether you want to hear from the owner. We are ready to present to you a recommendation for mitigation based on the time on the file, and obviously, each case is weighed on its own merits, as I always say, and, you know, we try to give you a recommendation that at least makes us whole from an administrative standpoint, and obviously, that we obtain compliance from the property owner.
I see.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Penna. Mr. Penna, has it been the same owner since inception, since 2008? Or have the owners, has the ownership changed, or it's always been the same owner?
It's gone through several different owners. In 2008, it was owned by Corzo Investments. Prior to that, the ones that got issued in January of 2007 was owned by Mr. Victor Uribe.
And is this property now up for sale, or it's coming before us because it's just finally here?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Perhaps we can ask the owner to...
Yeah, right now, it's held by Maximo Corzo and Max F. Corzo and Corzo Investments.
Mr. Corzo, can you come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, the address, and...
Yes, my name is Max Corzo, and I reside at 6437 Southwest 16th Street. We acquired, this is my mom's house, Maria Corzo, that she passed away, and we're in a probate state right now, and we acquired a title, and that's why we're getting everything resolved. But, you know, she was, you know, she's been the owner for many years, and I'm sorry that it's taken forever to resolve, but, you know, we couldn't take control, you know, she owned the house, and, you know, now that she passed a couple of years ago, we've, you know, we're taking care of all the issues, and, you know, so that's why I'm here. I want to see what can we do and what offer, can you offer me to resolve this issue to the best of the ability?
Thank you.
Mr. Corzo, are you, will you reside in the house?
Yes.
This is your, you stated this is your address, so...
That's correct.
You are the resident.
That's correct, yes.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Max, when did your mother die?
Two years ago. Two years ago, February 4th, 2015.
Okay.
Any further question?
Is this your only property in West Miami?
Yes, mine, yes. I'm entitled with my father. My father owns all the properties in West Miami, but that has nothing to do, this is the only...
This is your only property?
Correct, this is where I reside, correct.
Okay, if I don't hear anything else from the commission, I want to hear from manager's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, this, I've discussed this with Mr. Penna, we've gone back and forth on the file, and obviously, it's a case, one of those cases that has accumulated an sizable amount of liens against the property, but in order for us to recoup our investment in the file, the time spent by the city, our recommendation would be that you accept nothing less than a $50,000 settlement from the property owner, so to release the liens, and obviously, once we are assured by Mr. Penna that there is compliance, that all these violations have been addressed. And again, there has been a long period of time where the owners, whoever they were during the different periods of time, have neglected to take care of these violations. So I would say $50,000 is our combined or joint recommendation. We've looked at the file, Juan and I sat down and met yesterday. We've discussed this with our city attorney as well, and so I believe $50,000 would at least make us whole in terms of the time spent on this.
Okay, Mr. Corzo?
I accept.
Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, in what period of time you will...
Let's read the resolution first.
Let's read the resolution.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Let's read the resolution, then continue the discussion.
Okay, item 11E, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offered in the amount of $50,000 from Maximo Corzo and Max Corzo on code enforcement liens for code violations of the property located at 6437 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment fully is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Suarez?
Yeah. Max, you understood very clear, you accept $50,000.
Now, do they give me a possibility to pay this, or it's got to be paid off at one lump sum?
The weight of payment, then you arrange with the manager. This is my opinion, I don't know if the table is going to, but it's $50,000, okay? Make clear, you accept, okay?
The, is the house for sale, or are you planning to stay in the house?
No, we're planning, we're painting, and we're planning to stay in the house.
Okay.
Yes, house is not for sale.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The arrangement cannot be with the city manager, the arrangement has to be with the commission.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry I said city manager, or if the commission accepted, but the commission will take care of that, though. Thank you.
We need to find out the specific time in which that amount is going to be paid, because if not paid by a time certain, the fine will be reversed to the original amount. So we need to hear from the gentleman, when do you expect to pay that amount, sir?
Well, depends what type of agreement or plan.
No, you have to tell us.
It's not planned.
We giving you...
In what time?
We giving you the opportunity to, if it's something reasonable that we can discuss and we can accept, if it's something unreasonable, then we'll talk about it.
What's the time length that I have?
30 days, 45 days, 60 days, what is the maximum?
The maximum that this commission has awarded is 90 days, if my memory serves me correct.
Correct.
In 90 days, I think it's not enough time. I'm looking to refinance the property, and then this, you know, right now, they're taking forever, you know, I got to start all the process to start to refinance. So I don't think in 90 days, I'll be ready to, you know, to comply in 90 days.
Let me ask you this, sir, you have made a commitment, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You have made a commitment to pay $50,000. That would be the recommendation of the management. Is it reasonable for you to state that you will pay that amount? I don't know how much the house is worth, or how much money you owe in mortgages, or whether or not you'll be able to pay it through a mortgage, but we need to know, and you have to be candid, whether or not you will be able to afford it, otherwise, you'll be in default. You understand what I'm saying? You need to discuss it with...
The maximum time is 90 days? I mean, there's nothing more that...
The 90 days is the maximum time that this commission has allowed these types of cases to be paid when there's an application for a mortgage and a refinance, and it's, that's the time that it takes, you know, in the worst-case scenario. You see some refinances that move along rather quickly, others take a little bit more time, your case is a probate case, and therefore, it all depends at what stage of the probate, of the probate process you're in. And that being said, 90 days is reasonable if...
I would like to speak to the attorney handling the probate to, you know, to say...
That's what I was going to...
Before I commit, I mean, I accept the $50,000, I think it's very reasonable, and I respect, I mean, I just want to do the right thing, and I just want to consult it with the attorney to see what's the time length, so we could do things right.
That was going to be my next question, sir. If this is in probate, which I did not know that it was, there's nothing that we actually can do without leave of court. In other words, if this home is in probate, it's up to the judge to determine who's going to get what. So I think that it's premature. What you can do at this point is abate the future fines and just simply say, "We'll give you so much time in which the gentleman can inquire from the attorney and the judge, what is it that you're going to do?" Because he has no right, the ownership, I mean, not the ownership, the ability or the capability of doing something depends on the judgment of the court, okay? So we don't know what the court is going to do or what the stage of the court proceedings are.
So what's your recommendation, Mr. Attorney?
My recommendation is for this to be continued, for the gentleman to go back to his attorney, and the attorney go to the court, and submit to the court the recommendation of the city manager and what the commission feels. See, we don't know that the gentleman's going to be able to accomplish what he says that he's going to accomplish. First, he says that he's going to refinance the home. If this case is in probate, that has to be approved by the court. So we have to submit to the court the amount of money that is owed to the city of West Miami, and so this cannot be just because we wanted to.
Okay, so why don't we do the following? Can we continue this item to the next commission meeting?
I...
And then put it on the agenda to come back with an answer to us?
In addition, we need to find out whether or not the violation have been completed.
Yes, the violation has been cleared. All the violations have been cleared.
Violation, according to Mr. Penna, violations have been cleared.
Well, we have to find out what the procedure of the court is.
Now, may I?
Yes.
Max, you understood what the attorney said. You have possession of the house. You have possession of the house.
Correct.
Possession, you live in there.
Correct.
You touch the walls, you sleep there.
And I'm also entitled
But you don't have property of the house, so in order to get the mortgage, you have to be, you have to have the property, so that's why he said you have to go to your lawyer, go to the probate, uh, judge, and get the property, whatever property is, be, you and your brother, whatever, and then when you have a property, you may apply for a refinancing, for a mortgage, until you have the property rights, you can't do anything, so you better do fast.
Okay.
You understood, right?
So what we're going to do is, we're going to continue this to the next commission meeting, which will be, I believe, April 4th?
April 4th and
So, so between now and then, give you an opportunity to talk to your attorney and come back over here with, with an answer, okay?
And ask your attorney to give me a call, I'd be very happy to, uh, to accommodate you with no charge to the city or to you, okay?
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
But if you don't tell us, I mean, I cannot counsel the commission to just go ahead and accept it, and, uh, I cannot counsel you, but certainly, if I were to counsel you, I would say, uh, if this is in probate, you need the probate, uh, uh, judge to say yea or nay, I mean, we just can't arbitrarily say that.
Absolutely.
Here, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, April 4th, and if you would be so kind to have your attorney contact the city attorney, so that we are guided on whether this item should be placed on the agenda if we're ready to go, and if the commission can go ahead and set a time.
Thank you very much, honor.
Okay, with that, I, I need a motion to, I need a motion to make this official, okay?
Motion?
A motion to defer the item?
Motion to continue the item.
Continue the item?
Okay, okay, uh, can you call the vote?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item continued.
Thank you. All right, so we'll see you April 4th.
Yeah, good night, God bless.
Okay.
Good night.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can we go back to the original order of the agenda, please?
Yes, to item four, Mr. Mayor. Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for March 7, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for February 7, 2018, charter review board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, next item?
Item five, report of the city manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, I don't have a written report, however, for the record.
No report, great, okay.
For the record, the flyers for the Easter egg hunt have been delivered to all the properties in the city of West Miami, we have it, also, we have, um, reached out to those residents that have registered their emails with the city, we hope we have a, a nice weather and a nice crowd at the park, um, we have everything, Gotti has prepared everything, uh, we ordered all the, the bells and whistles for our Easter egg hunt, and it should be a very nice, uh, event, and the next item, we are still working with FEMA, as a follow-up, I want to advise you that we still have not received any reimbursement from FEMA for our storm-related activity, tomorrow's one of those days that I'm probably going to have to spend the better half of my day submitting new information, additional information that FEMA is requesting, this is a long process, and, um, we are told we're on the right track, we're doing things correctly, but I am not getting any answers on when we will receive the monies that the city is entitled to, so that we can pay off the credit line, we have a monthly interest, um, payment due to the bank of approximately twenty-five, $2,600 of interest payments that, you know, weren't accounted for, uh, unfortunately, we had no choice but to go out and seek this line of credit that was approved back in September, so the sooner we get our money back, the sooner we pay off that credit line, so, and I want you to know that we are not falling asleep, uh, on the job, we have, uh, every day, we're bombarded with requests for additional information, and Mercedes, Juan and I are at it every single day, so, um, we expect to be able to complete on our end tomorrow all the pending items, and I'm going to try to reach out to the state FEMA representatives to see when we can expect to see the larger part of the debris removal costs involved with the storm, which is over a million dollars.
Wow. Okay.
So, uh, Saturday, 10 o'clock in the morning, at the city of West Miami Recreation Center, for the Easter egg hunt.
Be there. Next item?
Item six, report of the city attorney.
I have no report.
And on that, uh, on that, on the report of city attorney, Mr. Mayor, I would like to take just a few, uh, just a minute to inform you about, uh, the dates of, that we have after the elections, if I may?
Yes.
After the elections that we were supposed to have, but we won't, because at the end of qualifying, Mayor Eduardo Mujina and Commissioners Rhonda Rodriguez and Juan Blanes became unopposed, and, uh, for that, uh, we won't have, uh, elections in the city of West Miami, but on April 10, 2018, at 12 o'clock, the determination of the office of the vice mayor and commissioner by lot will take place at this commission chambers, and on April 16, 2018, at 8 o'clock, the swearing-in ceremony of the newly re-elected officials will take place, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item seven, report of the city engineers, non this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I do have a committee report, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, I, I don't have one.
It's that time of year again, where I would, um, like to bring to your attention that we're going to have our annual career day mock city commission meeting, um, I want to run the date by you and invite all of you, um, the more the merrier, the more we can have here, I know Commissioner Blanes has been here in the past with me, and, and Vice Mayor has been here, so I invite all of you, it's going to be on May 9th, uh, and the commission meeting will probably be around 10:30, Madam Manager, more or less?
More or less, yes.
Because the children will take a tour of, um, police department, public works, city hall, the community center, which they love to visit, and the seniors love to have them, and then after that, we'll be coming up here for a commission meeting, so around 10:30, um, Wednesday, May 9, so
10:30 in the morning?
10:30, approximately.
Okay.
And, um, it'll be a mock commission meeting, that the kids have a wonderful time, and so I invite each and every one of you here to, um, stand with the, the mayor and the commissioners of that day, or that, of that hour, um, to guide them in the procedures of a commission meeting.
They will send a calendar to
Yes, we'll send a, a reminder, a reminder.
A reminder, we'll set, we have a, right after tonight, a calendar?
Yeah.
And then we'll set the agenda, once the children select the topic that they want on that agenda.
It's, it's a fun time, it really is, so I invite all of you to join me on that day.
Okay, I put it as a tentative?
A tentative? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, tentative's good, it's a good start.
Yes, I, I, I have a full-time job.
It's a good start.
All right, uh, anything else, uh, on the committee report? Okay, next item?
Item, uh, item nine, citizen presentation was covered, item 10, unfinished business, non this evening, and item 11B, under new business agenda items, this is a second reading, a public hearing, in ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami, repealing section of the code of ordinances of the city of West Miami in conflict with chapter 2017, 149, Florida statutes, preempting local ordinances requiring, requiring permits to paint residences, amending ordinance 9303 and 200302, establishing color charts for the painting or repainting of buildings and structures in the city of West Miami, ratifying compliance of the col- to the color chart approved in said ordinances, require enough, requiring an application for approval of said colors pursuant to existing ordinances, providing for a methodology of implementation and inspection of post-painting of buildings and structures, providing for an application and inspection fee, providing for penalties for failure to comply with the paint chart and inspection ordinance, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date, mayor and city commission, and this public hearing was advertised on March 9, 2018, on a newspaper of general circulation.
Thank you, um, I have a, I have a question, in, in preparation for this meeting, I, I read a little bit of the ordinance on the, on the, the paint ordinance, and, um, I, I, Mr. Attorney and Mr. Pena, I want to know if we can contemplate this at this time, it has nothing to do with the ordinance, except for the fact, the, the way the ordinance is right now written, you have a base color, uh, and I'm talking about the painting ordinance, you have a base color, and then you have an accent color, I believe, after, you know how it is when you, you adopt the law or, or an ordinance, and then it goes into effect, and then you see what's happening with it, and one of the things is, the percentage on the accent color, it's pretty high, I, what is it?
Thirty percent of a wall.
Thirty percent of the wall, so basically, if you think about this for a moment, you know, you can have a base color that is whatever, uh, according to what is permitted, and then, but you can paint thirty percent of that as an accent color, uh, so my suggestion is, if we can reduce the, the accent color, the percentage, um, I, I, I'm out, and by the way, I, I don't want to use this example, but I have to use this example, I don't want to use the example of, of the city of Corrigan, because it's very, very complicated, you know, over there, you have to go to the board, you have to, you know, you have to ask permission, you know, so there's a long process, uh, I don't want this over here, at least, me, and I'm sure nobody wants to go through that length process just to paint the house, but, so what we had done is, we established guidelines that you can pick from, and, uh, the only thing I'm saying is tweaking those guidelines to reduce, uh, the percentage on the accent color, and if you drive around, you understand what I'm saying, so basically, you can take, you know, you can paint one-third of your facade a different color, so you can have a, um, you, you can have a carnival there.
Mr. Mayor, this is not the intent of this ordinance.
Uh,
Correct, but it's part of the ordinance. Well, I understand that, but the thing is that, you see, the main issue that we have to understand is this, we do have a permit ordinance, requiring a permit to paint a property, the legislature, uh, went ahead and amended, uh, their ways and prohibited municipalities to, uh, require a painting, uh, permit.
Of residential properties.
I'm sorry?
Of residential properties.
On residential properties, and also on other properties, such as gas stations, had nothing to do one with the other, but they inserted that particular caveat there, you see, I think that that's unconstitutional, but, uh, there's no way that, to determine that until somebody challenged it, but, uh, the intent of this is to, uh, permit us to, uh, collect the fee for the inspection of the, uh, chart, and then re-inspection of the property to be in conformity with the chart, so what we intended, my understanding, is to, uh, create a methodology where we would control a chart of colors, whatever the, the ordinance stated, and also have the ability to inspect the property subsequent to, without, uh, requiring a permit.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do the following, so
Correct, but I, I, if I could, but as I believe, uh, Mr. Villalobos is, the mayor also wants to include, because it's part of ordinance 200302, he wants to reduce the percentage of accent color. Right now, it's at thirty percent, he wants to reduce it ten percent, I think, is what we discussed.
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, you, you just stated that we have to rewrite the ordinance, right?
Well, this ordinance here, rewrite the, the ordinance, as a matter of fact, that ordinance that we had
Change it, change it.
The ordinance we had is preempted by a Florida statute.
Florida statute.
Understood.
In other words, that ordinance that we had, requiring a permit, is no longer valid.
So we need a new one?
This is the new one.
Okay.
What you're proving today is the new ordinance.
Well, can that be amended, friendly amendments to it?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay, I happen wholeheartedly to agree with the mayor, I think that, uh, you know, it would be prudent for us to reduce the amount, you know, to less than thirty percent, thirty percent is too much, I think it should be something like maybe fifteen percent, or I actually defer that to you, Mr. Mayor.
My, my suggestion is ten percent, I believe me, ten percent is a lot. Ten percent is a lot, but I, but I think it's, it's, uh, that's why it's called an accent, it's not, you know, it's not painting, I mean, I see sometimes houses, they paint the front and then the sides are different color.
I concur with you then, ten percent.
May I ask a question? Do, do these accent colors have to abide by our color chart?
No, that's another thing I would suggest, that you adopt that the accent colors also have to be part of the color chart.
Because by just changing the percentage, doesn't mean we have any say-so over the color.
Correct.
Concur with Mr. Pena to do that as well.
Right, and, and Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez, we, and I spoke about that this afternoon, we didn't know whether it would be cleaner for us to adopt this ordinance that takes care or cures the lack of compliance with the legislative, uh, with, with the, with the law, with the state law, and deal only with the issue of, of requirement of a permit, which we need to do away with, and treating the amendment to the ordinance, to the paint ordinance, in a separate ordinance, it, you know, and obviously, we need to be guided by Mr. Villalobos, what's best to do it, all in one ordinance, or deal with colors, accent colors and percentages in a separate
Okay, I, I'm the one who brought it up, so I, I'm in agreement with what you're saying, and, and the reason I'm in agreement with it is because this is a public hearing, and I, uh, I see very little audience here tonight, so in, 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 you know, so, so there's transparency, I think we should adhere to this ordinance, but not to forget to make, and, and I, I hate to do it this way, because I know when you leave things behind, things, uh, sometimes don't happen, but either, either we bring it up to, to, uh, planning as only board to, to do that, to start that change, or, or do, or, or bring the ordinance, uh, in the proper procedure next time, I'm talking about, yes, what?
I have a question, what you
Are we talking about section six, are we not, uh, Mr. Pena?
Yes.
Okay, the issue is this, what we try to accomplish with this ordinance is to comply with the
Legislature.
Act of the legislature.
I, I understand that perfectly well.
Now, if we want to amend ordinance 9303 and 200302, we have to amend that by another ordinance.
Okay, so, so that's what I agreed to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
See, I, I, I said I brought it to the table?
Right.
And, and, and I reconsidered my, you know, in, in, in the experience of, of clarity, transparency, so, you know, what about, if somebody, uh, comes along later on, if we change it tonight, and they say, oh, how come, I didn't hear about this, okay? Because it was not advertised.
What I would suggest then is this, until such time as we amend ordinance 9303 and 200302, okay, let that ordinance, or those ordinances, stay until such time as we amended.
That's fine.
Because we cannot amend it, an ordinance that is directed to one issue and mix it up with another issue, so I would suggest that you remain with the color chart that you have it right now, and then go out, and since we say individual, we will amend the ordinance 9303 and 200302 in another ordinance that we're going to have, but at this point, mixing the, uh, those, uh, changes is improper.
I, I agree, I, I, I'm in total agreement, so, okay, so, the, do you read the, the ordinance? Yes, you did.
Yes.
But we need to go ahead, Commissioner, before, before I open the public hearing.
I have a question. Mr. Pena, I remember years ago, when this ordinance was discussed and discussed and we make a chart of the colors, right?
Yes.
Now, the point is this, we're talking about the accent color, do we have a chart for the accent colors?
No, what I suggested was to make
Wait, 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 let me, my third question, so we have one, one chart for the, for the main color, we don't have a chart for the accent color?
No.
So, in that way, what we, the, the people who come to paint the house, they take the accent color from the same chart that we have, the main chart.
No.
So, how you, they identify the, the accent colors?
The accent colors are not, uh...
Are not in the chart.
Regulated.
Except for percentage.
Oh, they are not, that, they are, in our city, they are not regulated.
No.
So, that's why the attorney said, in order to change this order, the ninety-three oh-three and three oh, two thousand three-two, we have to make a new one to substitute this.
In, in the future?
Right.
Well, yeah, in the future.
Tonight, we're discussing this one?
No, no, we, I, I, I agree with you and send this to the, to the...
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning. I suggest to make a chart for the accent colors and then change the whole thing, because the state of Florida do not allow charge for the, for the permit. We should not charge the resident for the paint, their, their resident.
Okay.
Florida regulation, uh, now is the, we cannot charge it for a permit.
Okay.
Actually, we have to change the whole thing.
Any further discussion?
That's why we're talking about inspection. Vice Mayor, that's why we're talking about inspection.
I already paid for my, my permit to paint my house.
But what's before, now...
But you didn't paint it yet, so...
Florida legislation...
Well...
No, wait, wait, excuse me, Florida legislation make this rule, uh, one, two months ago, it's something new. No, when you paint your house, don't worry.
I haven't painted it yet.
No, what?
I paid for the permit.
So, I think what you say, Mayor, I agree with you and I agree with the lawyer. Let's make a new ordinance with all these things.
Okay, so, okay, on the subject, which is item B, uh, no further discussion for now, so I can open the public hearing. Okay, I opened the public hearing, anybody wants to speak on the subject?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Back to the table, we close the public hearing, I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Let me, let me make it clear, a motion to approve this ordinance as it stands right now.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Good.
All right, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes out the vote. Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
And I will get with Mr. Penn in order to, uh, draft another, uh, ordinance, uh, to the will of Commissioner, uh, Blanes.
Actually, this is something that the mayor brought up yesterday during our pre-agenda meeting. And today, as we were preparing for the meeting, I, I discussed it in the morning with Commissioner Blanes and in the afternoon with Commissioner Rodriguez and everybody expressed a desire to modify the actual structure for the percentage of, of the, uh, accent.
I, I, I do defer to the mayor because of his expertise.
But it's actually not the mayor's either.
Yes.
It's going back to the zoning board.
It's going back to, they're, they're more expert than us.
Yeah. So, it is going back to the zoning board, it'll be present, their recommendation will be presented to you by Mr. Penn by way of a future agenda. And...
Okay.
Madam manager, just a clarification, we're not only looking at the percentage, but we're looking at also the actual color chart.
Yes, ma'am.
Color, the trim, is that what's called, the trim?
Accent, accent. Accent colors, yes, please, thank you.
Mr. Penn, uh, just from my recollection, how long did it take the, uh, zoning board to come out with the recommendation last time?
The first ordinance was in what, ninety what? Ninety-six, ninety-four, and it was passed in two thousand three?
Ten years.
Well, we can't have that again.
Well, it's not up to us, Mr., uh, Commissioner. If the zoning board does not make their mind, there's nothing that we could do.
Then we will then.
What?
By adopting, you know, another chart of another very successful city...
But I just wanted to advise the commission.
You know, that, that we can just, you know, take and plug it in and that's it.
Let's, let's have good faith.
I have, I have, I have confidence in our planning and zoning board.
Yes, so do I, so do I, that's, so, um, okay.
Okay, I'll...
Next, next item.
I'm, I'm, I'm in support.
Item eleven C, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending ordinance to eighty-two, section five, subsection five point two, off-street parking by amending parking requirements for land use sections in single-family duplexes, apartments, mixed-use corridors, motels and hotels, retail businesses, commercial, uh, churches, theaters, auditoriums and similar places of public assembly. Restaurants and public dining rooms, office buildings, clinics, hospitals and welfare institutions, adding subsection five point ten and five eleven, establishing requirements for parking spaces, access to buildings and visitor parking and reaffirming the height of buildings, adding subsections five point two B, tandem parking, subsection five point two C, visitors and, uh, commercial property and subsection five point two D, regulating parking within non-paid areas of property, providing for codification, providing for separability and providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. I know we can't discuss this item, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Excuse me, Mr. Attorney?
I know we, this is a first reading, by the way, is it, it's a public hearing too?
No, it's a first reading.
Okay, first reading. I know we cannot discuss this item, but I read this ordinance very, very thorough. This is something that I, I deal with this every day. And I know there's some concerns about parking, uh, you know, and, and so on. And I'm, I'm glad that we're looking at this, but I, I want to tell you a little bit about the impact on this, okay? This, uh, we cannot take this ordinance lightly. I will recommend, because I know if we have a first reading and it's the first time we, we have it on the table for, for the eyes of everybody, uh, the second time is gonna be a public hearing. If you think this, the, the, the colors took a long time to, to get approved, this issue is, is very important. And the reason I said it's very important is because it has a dollar sign attached to it. I'll give you a couple of examples, okay? In the residential area, it talks about, and I know we have good intentions and so on, but it talks about people parking in the green area, but they cannot park in that area unless they're visiting the resident, that it is impossible for the police department to enforce, okay? So, uh, the next thing is, let's, so, so we start with the residents on one end, which is a simpler one, let's take it to the other. When we have a, a building, I know, we, we talk about a building that if we increase the parking, it's not, it's not gonna affect, uh, the height. Right now, we have high limitation. But I'll give you, I'll give you a, a, an example, so you think about it, okay? If you take a building, okay, that, the foreplate on the typical buildings are going on right now, they have around a hundred and sixty parking spaces, more or less, okay? The going rate for a parking space per level. So, we say we, we don't, the, the, this ordinance contemplates, okay, if we're gonna push for more parking, it contemplates, we're not gonna penalize for the height, so it's okay to add another floor. Now, if you take a hundred and sixty parking spaces, you add a floor, you multiply that times the going rate to build a single parking space, times twenty-five thousand dollars, that's how much it is.
Per space.
Per space. That yields four million dollars to building something. It's, it's a lot of money, okay? The other thing that happens is we, we, anything that we do here, all I'm saying is, we have to be very careful how we do it. I'm not saying we should not do it, I think we should study it. But I think my advice is to send it back to the Planning and Zoning Board. Why? Because we should compare it to other cities, other municipalities, what is it that they're doing? There's different movement in the parking. Some cities are actually reducing parking because they encouraging public transportation and, 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 and that might work for certain areas, you know, like, like, um, more central, I'll give you an example, more central to, to the people mover system or to, you know, the, uh, the, the transit or areas like that. That might not apply to us yet. So, so, you know, the issue of, of looking at parking, and, so I just gave you the two streams. Uh, I think, I'm not saying not to look at it, I think we need to look at it, because there's some concerns and we need to, to look at it. But I, what I'm saying is, uh, if we come over here, we, based on, you know, on, on, on logic and we vote and we pass this, that has, um, what's the word that I'm looking for? Repercussions in current projects, future projects, you know, investment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, right now, the city is looking at good times and, and I always say this, you know, 'cause a lot of people say, well, I'm against development, I'm pro-development, I'm against it and so on. Well, the fact of the matter is that we have done it very well, control, not imposing on the residential, okay? And we have benefited from it, not hindering the residential area. So, whatever, and, and, and whatever we, we, we have in place right now, it took meetings after meetings, committees that were formed, uh, experts in the field, residents, commercial, uh, owners that got together and, and they came up with this. And that's what we're seeing right now, that is part of the master plan and is part of the zoning map and, and so on. So, uh, before we change anything, I think it needs to be, uh, my suggestion, I should go back to the Planning and Zoning Board, so they compare it to other cities, uh, you know, other, um, municipalities, uh, and just to make sure that we do the right thing. Uh, I, yes.
Can I speak now?
Yes, uh, we can't discuss it, but, you know, all I'm saying is send it back, this is my observation after reading. I, I spent a lot of time reading it and I'm trying to, and the one that called my attention right away, they said, how is the police department gonna enforce this? You know, uh, you can't.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's definitely a whole lot of implications. And I agree with you. But I'd like to remind my colleagues, just like we were discussing not long ago, the possibility of us obtaining the rental bicycles. And we discussed that briefly, and I think it, it, it came to our, um, it came to light to each and every one of us that it's not feasible. Our city is just not made up to ride a bike from one end to the other. There's not that many places to go. You can literally walk there. Uh, we're a city that is probably less than half a square mile. And what I'm alluding to is that we don't have very much to mess up. We're incomparable to other cities. Other cities have many neighborhoods, twenty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred, different areas. And consequently, they can afford to mess one or two up and still have a great city. We don't have that luxury. We do something to our little city and that's it. The game is over. We messed it up. What we do here and what we say here makes a difference. And it's very important. The question is, what kind of difference do we want to make? So, I think that we need to start thinking about how to make sure that we make the residential area, which is the heart and soul of the city, impervious to what we're trying to accomplish. And, and I'm not saying, you know, let's stop what we're doing, I'm not alluding to that at all. But I think that we need to, to rethink, downshift, if you may. You know, if you keep going the same speed, you know, you take a turn, you're gonna go right off the tracks. So, I think that we need to, to give some thought to this, and I agree with you, this needs to go to the Planning and Zoning. They're the experts, they need to see it, they need to compare it to, to other cities. But by the same token, as, as I just alluded to here, we can't really use the example of other cities. We're unique and that's what makes us unique. That's why we had the, uh, the, the, the great moments that we just had a little while ago with all, with Haley and her family and the residents and the whole block. You know, everybody knew everybody and they came here and it was a wonderful time and, and everybody's so happy to live here in West Miami. And that's what's really truly important. That's why I live here. That's why I love it here. You know, I was alluding to the other day when we had the distinction moment for our illustrious city manager. And I was alluding to the, uh, uh, five managerial functions. Planning, organizing, directing, staffing, directing and controlling. Controlling is the most important one, because that's when you rethink, readjust, you get feedback and you tweak and you change. And you make sure that things are going right, that is the most important function. It doesn't matter how good of a plans you have or how much, uh, greatly you have organized or how you've greatly staffed or directed. If you don't control, it doesn't make a difference. So...
So, with that, I'm done.
Uh, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I, I'd like to make a statement and then I need a two-minute break. Okay? Otherwise, an accident might occur.
Okay.
Number one, if you're going to suggest to send it back to the zoning board, you need to withdraw this ordinance, because you don't know what the zoning board is going to recommend. And you would have to readadvertise it and have a first reading on whatever the zoning board recommends, okay?
Okay.
So, you have to, the motion would be withdraw this first reading, send it back to the zoning board, or send it to the zoning board, for the zoning board to review it, make the appropriate recommendation on a first reading of an ordinance and not this one. This cannot be, if we're gonna change it, we're gonna not have a first, this ordinance to have today as a first reading. Did I make myself clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, the language again is, I need a motion force to defer...
To withdraw?
To withdraw this ordinance.
The ordinance.
And send it to the planning and zoning board.
And remand it to the zoning board.
Okay.
No, motion, I make a motion already.
Yeah, a motion and then who's second?
Somebody's second?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Uh, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Are we now on a break or we're still voting?
Two.
No, he's breaking.
Oh, he's on a break.
Yes.
Depends.
Uh, yes. Yes, to withdraw.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioner Blanes.
What?
How do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. So...
We're on a break.
We, we have a two-minute break.
Could you call for a two-minute break?
He's coming back now for now.
Okay. Two-minute break.
The boys run.
Mr. Mayor, next item is item eleven F. Resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to execute a mutual aid agreement with the City of Sweetwater Police Department for continued mut- mutual police support, providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Mr. Mayor, if I may yield to the Deputy Chief of Police, Carlos Avila, on this item.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commission. Uh, this is a standard, uh, mutual aid agreement with the, uh, City of Sweetwater Police Department. They are our closest neighbor, as far as the municipality is concerned, west of the city. And at time to time, we need their, their services for assistance for equipment or something that we don't have, for example, like K-9 units. So, it's a standard mutual aid agreement that we consistently do with every other department.
Like, has been done customary?
Customarily with every other police department.
Motion, second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, have you voted? Yes, Commissioner Blanes, have you voted? Commissioner Rodriguez?
And this doesn't have to go to Planning and Zoning, I presume, correct?
I definitely hope not.
In that case, yes.
Commissioners, uh, okay, I said Commissioner Blanes, Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Muriña.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item G, eleven G, report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to audit finding status for the use of the PTP funds and CITT conclusion, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission. I know it's getting late, however, it is my duty to bring to you, uh, matters of financial concern to the city. With that said, we have received a letter from Miami-Dade County Office of Citizens. One second. Citizens Independent Transportation Trust. We know it as OCITT. This letter, which is dated March sixteenth, twenty eighteen, which you have been supplied with a copy, basically closes the, the loop with the conclusion of the audit that we have, we have, excuse me, brought to your attention in the past. As you know, Miami-Dade County audits the use of the half-cent penny tax from every, that, from every municipality. The time between these audits is about six, between six and eight years. We have been involved with two audits since the referendum passed back in two thousand and two for the use of the ha- half-cent penny tax. Back in November twenty seventeen, we brought an agenda item to your attention that dealt with the audit findings on the use of the City of West Miami's, um, half-cent penny tax to fund our surtax projects that are approved by Miami-Dade County in the five-year transportation, uh, plan that we submit to them. The Office of OCITT has rendered a review of the auditing services department, and they have concluded that they confer, that they concur with the findings and recommendations as detailed by the audit. Meaning, the CITT is an independent agency of the county and they are audited by a department, by Miami-Dade County. We have met several times with the representative, Nectar Toledo. We met with the outgoing executive director, Charles Skerr, and with the incoming director, Javier Betancur, who assigned Mr. Nester Toledo as the municipal liaison to work with the city. To bring the matter to a conclusion, we have to replenish PTP from other funds, meaning from general fund. The county auditing teams have determined that we should have had, at the closure of September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, the city should have had four hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred eleven dollars in unspent funds in the PTP reserve for future projects, traffic calming and all the other projects that are approved by the use of the surtax money. Our auditors at that time made an entry where their conclusion is that our balance was to, uh, was ninety-seven thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. That was part of the audit report. Now, the county has concluded that the difference is owed by the city's general fund to the PTP fund, which is three, a total of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. What we did in anticipation of this finding, which is now final, we transferred in the, we included a transfer in the, in the budget for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Because of the initial findings of the audit, we transferred a hundred thousand dollars from general funds to the PTP so that we can start to replenish the cash deficit created by the findings of the audit. That left us with a balance still to replenish of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And in this year's budget, as approved by the commission, we also have a line item in the budget that transfers a hundred thousand dollars towards replenishing that cash deficit. Now, the county is requesting a response from us within thirty days detailing the corrective actions and how we plan to resolve the issue, including but not limited to replenishing the cash deficit in the PTP fund. And failure for us to address this matter may result in the recapture of surtax money, meaning they will withhold the balance of what is owed to the PTP in the amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. They will withhold those revenues from coming to the city. So, in conversation, Mercedes and I, with Mr. Toledo, we have agreed to budget and we're comfortable to commit to budgeting a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars in next year's budget, in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and replenish the cash deficit left in this PTP fund as a result of the audit. So that the next audit will start with a clean slate and to avoid a recapturing of funds or a suspension of the funds, which would not look good for the city. It may trigger a finding in our audit report and it would, it would set us back a little bit in, from a financial perspective. So, we come to you today because I found this letter in my email when I returned from vacation, um, and we discussed it with the county. And at the beginning, they wanted to withhold the revenue from the city. And I asked them to go back and reconsider it, and they have, and they are willing to accept a recommendation that we make that fund whole by September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, which was, would give us time to budget in next fiscal year, the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's not that we did anything wrong. It is after the county told us that we could use the money for the five-year transportation plan that was laid out, they came back eight years or seven years into the, the first audit, and there was a deficit that was carried over because after they said you can use the money for this purpose, they came back and said, you can't. And we have everything documented. But the problem is, is that fighting them would, would be costly to the city. And we don't have to pay them back this money. We're only transferring from one of our funds to the PTP fund and replenishing the cash. So, the money stays in the City of West Miami for future use of capital improvement projects, if you wish, if you want to put some more money in sidewalks. That is a perfectly eligible, uh, expense. And so, we can start a clean slate for the future audit, which we don't know how long it'll be. It'll probably be another six, seven years. And I don't know, I hope we're all here, but if we're not, it will give the new generation of West Miami administrators an opportunity to work with a cleaner audit process. So, that would be our recommendation, is to replenish the cash by September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Include that as an allocation from general fund, as a transfer to PTP, and we will be completely done with this issue.
Thank you. Wonderful. I think it's a very clear explanation. Super clear.
Okay. Any comments, any questions for the manager? Okay. Go to the order.
In order for me to do this.
Oh.
I need instruction by way of a vote because this way it'll direct me or our office to put the money in next year's budget.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Give the money for the future sidewalk work. If qualified for sidewalk, that should be the, the, the perfect place to put that money.
Good idea.
I wholeheartedly agree.
We have a lot of old sidewalks here in.
My manager, my manager, so you need a, we need a motion?
You need a motion to direct me to respond to the county and accept my recommendation so that I can proceed to formalize this agreement with the county.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay.
Commission, Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes, second by Commissioner Suarez.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Go to the order. I do.
Good night.
No, not yet. Very clear, very, very, okay. Uh, I'll give you an example. Uh, I just, I just want to clarify something that, that, that happened tonight. Uh, myself, you know, I, there was an item that, that I had an idea about talking about the paint and so on, and, and I, I, you know, I think, uh, Commissioner Blanes said it the best. We have very little to mess up with. So far, we doing good, and so we, every time we take a step, it should be to better the City of West Miami, but we need to analyze it and make sure that we move and, and we don't, we don't, we don't, let's say we, we, we vote on something and, and then all of a sudden, we here have to pay those consequences if things don't work out. So, we, we got to make sure that we follow all the steps. Uh, that's why, like, for instance, uh, we, we're in the process of getting, uh, possibly we can get a, a traffic study and, and so on, because that's going to tell us, you know, what's going on after these buildings are getting built and, and things like that. So, so I think we're moving in the right direction. And, uh, thank you, and it's a pleasure serving with you in this board. I need a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor?
I have something too.
Yes?
It is a pleasure for me to serve with all of you two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.